Everybody ready? Magical.
Don't you start to try stealing that cookie. I paid Uber eats fees for that cookie. I know you're eyeing it.
All right. Ready, guys? Good evening, everyone, and I welcome you to the Thursday, May 29, 2025 Capital Improvement Program Budget Meeting. If everyone would please rise for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's see. Ms. Donnelly, are you doing the invocation? Or shall I?
I can do it.
Thank you. Love that.
As we begin this meeting, we pause to reflect and seek guidance. May we be granted wisdom in our decisions, patience in our discussions, and a spirit of fairness in all that we do. May we approach our responsibilities with humility and a sincere desire to serve the greater good. We give thanks for the opportunity to lead and for many individuals, staff, volunteers, and neighbors who contribute to the strength of Oldsmar. May our work here today reflect the values of compassion, respect, and integrity, and may it bring lasting benefit to the people of Oldsmar. Amen.
Amen. I put the Gens to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So lovely invocation. The next item on the agenda is our Citizens Open Forum. I don't believe we have any green cards this evening, but if there anyone is in the room would like to speak to the council, please come up, state your name and address. Please give your city if you don't live in the city of Oldsmar. I think I know this gentleman.
Tom O'Shea, 208 Lake Charles Court. I'm just excited for this budget hearing. Couple of things. I'm excited that the design for the new City Hall EOC is going to be on the budget. Also, I'm kind of sad that Douglas Road is now unfunded officially. Got bumped down to unfunded. And then. I notice there's four vehicles on the listing, it seems like, for this coming year. And with the price, with all the tariffs on vehicles and whatnot, I hope that you guys budget enough for that. And. And I'd just have to say, after last city council's meeting, there was a, it seemed like a decent debate on discussion on the food trucks. And it seemed like it was a good idea to keep it in-house to changing the ordinance on that. And I think that if the Planning and Redevelopment Department is well busy right now, that if we need to, I think we should hire more people for that department. So that way we can continue doing what we need to do, especially if it takes another year to get through all the backlog of problems from the hurricanes. And I am okay with you raising my taxes to get any and all of this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else on this side of the room that wishes to address the council? Anybody on this side of the room? All right. With that, I will close the Citizens Open Forum. The next item on the agenda is our Proposed Capital Improvement Program for fiscal year 2026 through 2030. Good evening, City Manager Felicia Donnelly. How are you?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Staff, members of the public.
So many nice faces.
Today, I'm pleased to present along with our staff our Capital Improvement Program for fiscal year 26 through fiscal year 2030. This document reflects a tremendous effort of cross-departmental coordination and long-term planning. It's not only a roadmap for the projects that we intend to fund and build, but a tool to support sound financial decisions, community engagement, and progress towards the council's priorities. I would like to take a few moments to introduce city staff who will be presenting or have worked to produce this document and are here tonight. So Cindy Nino, the Director of Administrative Services. Garrett Ziliff, the Assistant Director of Administrative Services. I have Sabrina Napkins, who is our Management Analyst. John Dauphine, who is our Senior Management Analyst. Daniel Simpson, who is our Director of Public Works. Jana Jan, who is our Assistant Director of Public Works. I have Mike Lavery, who is our Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. I have Chip Potts, who is our Director of Parks and Recreation. Tatiana Childress, Director of Planning and Redevelopment. Michelle Roy, Director of Human Services. Susan Hurley, Director of Library Services. Our City Clerk, Kristin Garcia. Jordan Lance, Assistant to the City Manager, Chief Schwab, Fire and Rescue Department. And John Lindsay, our Recreation Superintendent. And I also want to thank Barbara Schulte. She's not here tonight, but she does the design work for the document. So I'm really grateful. So as we progress through the document, please feel free to ask any questions during the presentation. Please do not hold them all to the end. So let's get started. Okay, so first, what is a Capital Improvement Program? So the Capital Improvement Program is a five-year financial and strategic plan that identifies the city's intended investments in major capital projects. This includes projects like roadway improvements, water and sewer upgrades, stormwater infrastructure, vehicles and equipment, and even technology in public facilities. Each project in the CIP is itemized by a start year, estimated annual cost, funding source, and alignment with council goals. And while we look across the five years, the CIP is updated annually, meaning it stays responsive to emerging needs, shifts in grant availability, and changes in priorities or timelines. This isn't a list of nice-to-have ideas. It's a tool that bridges our community's vision with practical implementation. So what's the purpose of the CIP? So why do we go through this process every year? It really serves four primary purposes. First, it gives us a structured decision-making process, ensuring that each project we consider is evaluated based on readiness, impact, cost, and alignment with priorities. Second, it connects directly to our long-range planning efforts, including master plans, redevelopment goals, and infrastructure assessments. Third, it's a vital financial management tool. It allows us to responsibly plan for multi-year funding obligations while hopefully avoiding unanticipated expenses and last-minute scrambles for resources. And finally, the CIP functions as our reporting document. It clearly shows the public, elected officials across all spectrums, and funding agencies what are we planning, how we are paying for it, and when will it happen? It's really important to note that this is a funded document. These are based on actual projections. So you'll notice that the total investment into the CIP is about $33 million over the next five years. So it's a substantial amount. So what are the advantages of a CIP? A well-structured CIP offers many advantages, both internally and externally. Internally. Whoops. I am not there. Internally, it aligns us to align our resources with the goals the council has set, ensuring that we're investing in infrastructure that matters most to our residents. It also helps us manage competing priorities by focusing on what's feasible and impactful, given our financial capacity. Externally, it increases community awareness and transparency. Residents and stakeholders can clearly see what projects are planned and how those projects contribute to public safety, mobility, and quality of life. The CIP helps us avoid wasted resources by coordinating the timing, funding, and scope of projects, ensuring that efforts are sequenced efficiently, materials and labor are used effectively, and investments are aligned with our long-term needs rather than short-term fixes. And perhaps most importantly, it promotes financial stability and encourages cooperation across departments, other governments, and funding agencies. So one of the most common questions we get is, how do we pay for all this? Cindy Nino is going to talk about this extensively throughout the presentation. But for an overview, the capital projects are funded from a variety of sources, depending on the type of project and the eligibility of funds. These sources include local tax dollars, such as ad valorem property taxes and utility fees. We also rely on penny-for-panellis sales tax and enterprise revenues from water, sewer, and stormwater utilities. Additionally, we aggressively pursue state and federal grant programs, as well as intergovernmental revenue partnerships. Some projects may also be partially or wholly funded through impact fees. And for large-scale projects, we may consider debt financing when appropriate to spread the costs over time. We have a current debt of Harbor Palms, for an example. In some cases, projects are included in the plan even if funding hasn't yet been identified. You'll notice at the back of the program is a long list of unfunded projects, and we're going to talk about that later tonight. The larger projects may have been identified through master plans, such as a recent water supply plan, wastewater, stormwater plans that are currently underway. We consider these projects typically multimillion-dollar projects as unfunded until grants and other funding sources become available. It wouldn't be fair to the public to put it in the document when we don't have current resources. This helps us track and prioritize them as funding opportunities arise. So where do we save funds to pay for these projects? Right? Once the funds have been identified and the projects are identified, the next question is, where do we hold them? So capital projects are managed in two broad categories: governmental funds and enterprise funds. On the governmental side, we use a general fund, community, and several other funds. Most, all the general fund, and you can see the listing of those. These are primarily supported by taxes and grants. For utility-related infrastructure, we have enterprise funds. And those are Water Sewer Operating Fund, Water and Sewer Impact Fund, Stormwater Utility Fund. These are supported by customer charges and reinvested into the system improvements. I think it's most easily understood that enterprise funds operate like a business, and Cindy's going to explain more how that happens. And so this structure allows us to maintain clear lines between different types of expenditures. It improves accountability and ensures compliance in how funds are legally required to be spent. So I'm going to ask Daniel Simpson to the lectern to talk about how we derive the cost for cost estimation of the bigger projects. So, Daniel Simpson, thank you.
Thank you. Daniel Simpson, Director of Public Works. So for cost estimating, how we go about it, for vehicles and equipment, we build out a proposed line item. Sorry. We use the contract pricing of a state contract and actually build out a vehicle this year. And then we put an inflation factor on it. So usually, what we've been doing lately is 10% for next year, and then after that, anything after that, 15%. For major capital projects, we create itemized cost estimates, and they're based on unit-price-based bids or F dot averages. So what we've been using is the last six months of DOT projects that have been done over the last six months. The averages for that is how we derive our unit-price-based contracts. We add a 10% contingency for unforeseen things that might come up. When you start digging in the ground when you've never been out there, it tends, problems tend to arise. And then next, we put in an uncertainty factor based on the scope certainty and the schedule. So if the project's going to be, you know, five, 10 years out, we don't know what it's going to cost in 10 years. Or if we're not really sure exactly how we're going to build this project. So like early iterations of the Douglas Road project where, you know, we don't really know exactly how we're going to build this thing and what it's going to take. So we would add a higher percentage uncertainty factor. And then on each design submittal on our large projects, we require a cost estimate that's prepared by the engineer of record. So each design submittal, we're getting a new cost estimate. So the theory is as we go through time, we're getting closer to reality. Yes. You want to go back?
I was going to ask a question, but then you wanted to switch it. Just. Hi, Daniel. Not for this document in front of us, but in general, have we ever had a contingency that stayed under 10%? Or, in other words, should we be adding a contingency of more like 15%? Or when we do our itemizes, like, or the inflation factor, should we be doing more than 10%? I only ask this just because we have seen a couple of projects, you know, Douglas Road, you know. Maybe it was because of the scope that we requested the proposals on, you know, when we requested the Mercedes-Benz perhaps for a roundabout, and we only really needed the Kia, right? So sometimes it's on us and sometimes it's not. But when we do make these estimates, are we accurate? Or should we have more wiggleworm?
So I would say we are not very accurate at this, but I don't.
Well, it's not on us, though. Like, it's not.
Well, I mean, I think that, like, the people who are really accurate at this, like, make a lot of money because it's very difficult.
Yeah.
You know, it's pretty much like picking the stock market, you know. So adding, you know, yes, higher inflation factor would be wise. And one of the challenges we've had is like, okay, COVID, let me talk about the challenges.
Yeah, go to the next slide. If it feeds in, yeah, if it feeds into what you were already going to talk about, go for it.
So the challenges we've had is first, the inflation from the COVID-19 pandemic. You know, we shut down the world for a period of time, and then factories and things weren't open up, which creates supply chain issues that we've all heard about. Grant funding from federal and state governments increased the demand on the construction sector. So you have all of this money coming into a system that the next limited supply of contractors and engineers. So it doesn't necessarily make new contractors and engineers. It's the same amount of people, so now they get to have a higher price point.
Supply and demand.
That's exactly the situation. And then next, the, right now, we're kind of in the uncertainty from tariffs. So when you hear uncertainty in cost estimating, that means contractors, when they have uncertainty, they charge you for it. Okay? Because the risk of price going, they're locked into a price when they bid the project.
So they pad it.
If it goes up, they have to pad it. And then finally, the grant requirements limit our flexibility. So when we go and apply for a grant and we get, you know, we do a grant agreement, that locks in exactly what our scope is, scope of work. And so that can oftentimes create high situations where we have trouble reducing scope or value engineering. So, you know, when we commit that we're going to build a road, a three-lane road, let's say, on Douglas Road, we have to build a three-lane road. We can't just cut out the middle lane for that grant, those grants.
Conversely, if we budget a project, let's say we budget it for $12 million, isn't it also true that we're going to get bids for about $12 million because they know what we have budgeted it for? In other words, they're going to put it, so it might not necessarily serve us to add too much of a contingency factor or inflation factor.
That is a part of the, yes.
So everybody's dancing.
Every pre-bid meeting we have, we get asked, what's the budget for the project? Now, a lot of times, I believe that is a, you know, if we're thinking it's 3 million and they're thinking it's 10, they're not going to go to the work of putting a bid together.
Perhaps we do have a good balance of estimate versus.
Well, I'm not, I'm, I would say that we are not, haven't been good at this over the last five years. Unfortunately, as we get better at it, it gets more difficult.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't know that we're necessarily not good at it. It's just that there's been so many changes.
Well, and the other problem, the challenge we have is, you know, after COVID, you have the lockdown and all of the supply chain stuff. You're thinking, well, that's only happens every 100 years, millennia, whatever, you know. So you're like, well, we're through that. But then something else comes that makes it more complex, you know.
Like a presidential election and tariffs and court decisions regarding tariffs, and who knows where we're going to be in a year.
So it's very, there's a lot of, uncertainty is the best word. And then how do we capture that and quantify it?
Thank you, Daniel.
Then further on the grant requirements, it creates schedule constraints. So one of the challenges we often have is we have maybe a federal grant and a state grant. Generally speaking, the state grants, they want you to spend the money really fast, and the federal grants, they want their weight, like, you have to wait for the grant to come in. So you're trying to get these grants to line up with, and their fiscal years are different than ours. So how to get all of that put together can be challenging. And when you have schedule constraints, that, that, if you, the length of the project timeline can affect the cost. Because if you, you know, if you think it's a two-year project and you have a year to do it, it will cost, like, they're going to work that into their bids. Because they'll need extra people. And then finally, federal grants specifically have labor requirements and different contract requirements that drive up the cost of the, like, of bids. So next, we're going to, I'm going to talk about the current projects we have that we're kind of in the middle of. And this is to kind of highlight some of the workload constraints we have. You know, so just because these aren't budgeted for next year, they're still going on, if that makes sense. So first, the St. Petersburg Drive Streetscape and Roundabout Project. So the, this project is to enhance the corridor of St. Petersburg Drive, underground overhead utilities, replace ditches with culverts, replace and widen sidewalks, decrease lane widths, and build a roundabout at Bayview. And the reason we're doing this is to establish the downtown corridor, enhance roadway safety for all modalities, and improve the corridor aesthetics. So the funding's pretty. The funding's pretty complicated for this. So first, we have $2.78 million funded out of the CRA Fund, which is 109. And then the Fund 302, this is where we capture the penny-for-panellis money. We have a state grant for the roundabout and a federal grant for the streetscape portion outside of the roundabout. And then finally, we have in the 401, which is the Water Sewer Utility, $440,000 budgeted. And that's to handle utility adjustments to our water and sewer utilities while we do the project. So the status is, in September of last year, we bid the project and we decided to reject it because we had one bidder. And then we began a value engineering, scope reduction of the plans, which was really to, you know, get rid of some of the extras that would drive up the cost. We have now new 90% plans that are under review at the Florida Department of Transportation, and we're continuing our utility, continuing our utility coordination. We're expecting to advertise for bid in late fall and, or in fall, and we're expecting the construction to begin in the spring of 2026. The next project is the WRF, Water Reclamation Facility Aeration Upgrades. This, you see a picture of our new blowers. So this is to replace and elevate the blowers that supply the Stage V Bardinfo Treatment Process with energy-efficient equipment sized to meet future capacity needs. So the reason we're doing this is for resilience, efficiency, modernization, and capacity. So one, this project, one of the elements, making a change in one of the basins created, it's one of the three projects that are needed to re-rate our plant to a higher permitted capacity.
Did everybody do their tour? Okay.
Yes. So this project was $4,486,000 and 20, $486,000. And the construction is approximately 90% complete. Next is the WRF Control Building. So this project is to replace our control building to meet current flood elevation requirements, upgrade electrical components, improve our use of space, and harden the building. And the reason is for resilience and modernization. We have a State of Florida grant of $2.15 million, and the rest is funded from the water sewer revenue and reserves. That's $4,781,000. And the total project cost is just under 7 million. The status is that it's approximately 16% complete, and that's based on, like, payment, you know, if that makes sense. So that's 16% build. So there's about a month lag on that. But the site grading's complete. They've, the concrete slab and masonry walls have been constructed to 12 feet, which is, you know, you can kind of see in the picture. And we're currently working on the electrical duct bank, underground utilities, and pouring tie beams.
I can actually see them every day across the street from my house because I work upstairs. It's remarkably quiet. You don't really hear anything, at least from where I'm at, right across the street. I get to see all the cool pumper trucks and the cement. It's pretty awesome.
It's good to have an extra set of eyes out there. All right. The next is our Wastewater Master Plan. This is a, to plan, prioritize, and schedule projects for our next 10 years and model and assess the process and collection system. The reason we're doing this is we have aging equipment, we're adapting to an increasing stringent regulations, improve efficiency, sustainability, and resilience, and account for our large industrial base, and increase plant capacity and support our city council priority of master planning. This project was, is $225,000 budget, and the modeling is nearly complete, and the project development and prioritization is where we're at. And we expect a draft in the next month or so. Okay, next is the Fiscal Year 2425 Water Meter Replacement Project. So we're in the process of replacing, really, every meter in the city is the goal, and to, to go from manual read meters to touch-and-read and radio-read-type meters. The reason is for efficient governmental operations and fiscal responsibility. These meters, meters when they fail, spend slower and therefore charge, undercharge people. So it's in our, it is fiscally responsible to make sure that people are billed correctly. The Water and Sewer Operating Fund is where this is funded at $738,000. And our status is that the contractors completed the meter replacement for Gull Air Village and is currently working in the area of Bayside. And so there's been 920 out of over 4,000 meters completed, and that's about 22%. And that's probably out of, like, it's been a little more than that since I made this slide. Okay. Next is the culvert at State Street. So the gist of this project is replace the ditch along State Street with a box culvert. And the reason is to reduce erosion of our banks, improve the water quality by reducing the sediment transport, decrease maintenance burden, and improve safety and aesthetics. Okay. So the funding, there's $1.6 million of a federal grant and $1 million from a state grant, and there's $1,500,000 not yet identified. So when we received the 90% plans last week, or whenever May 20th was, we had an updated cost estimate where the price of box culvert has nearly doubled. And that's based on recent bids from the DOT estimates. So being that the majority of this project's cost is the box culvert, it's a drastic increase. So we, June 23rd, there's a utility coordination meeting, and in July, the permitting is expected to be complete. And ongoing grant coordination has been going on. So summer 2025 is when final plans are expected, and we, you know, plan to advertise. And then in fall, the construction award is planned, assuming that we identify the funding. So it was kind of, this is very fresh, so when we put this, you know, we put the document together, we didn't know that information, so we're, you know.
And I just want to interrupt one second. This happened between the 60% plan cost estimate that the engineers provided and the 90%. So this drastic, so when we go back to talking about estimating, we can't estimate that a box culvert's going to go double in price. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys.
Well, and that's a, that is an engineer cost estimate based on, like, actual values. If you think about when we budget these projects, we're guessing what does a box culvert cost at that moment in time?
Made of cement rebar, I mean.
Like, and that's a, that is actually a fairly, an easier project to estimate from the standpoint of the scope, you know, because it's a box culvert and some grass and some dirt.
Does this funding estimate include that double cost? In other words, this slide was updated to reflect that?
Yes.
Hypothetically, if we can't identify $1.5 million, when does the federal grant lapse or the state grant lapse? Do we know? Are we thinking about these things? Is this?
Oh, oh, yeah.
I know you're thinking, I know you're thinking about these things. I know you're thinking, I know you're thinking about these things. Here's why I'm thinking about these things.
Saying right now or at night when I'm trying to say?
Here's the reason I'm thinking about these things, right? Culvert at State Street, important, there's definitely erosion happening. It's, it's a weird road, all kinds of problems there. Okay, that's one thing. It serves six to eight residences-ish, right?
Yeah, that, or adjacent to it.
And then I'm like, ooh, also Douglas Road went up. And that serves taxpayers who don't have homestead exemptions and who, you know, comprise our tax base and, you know, which, it's a choice between, right? Which is, which, where's our priority? Do we find $1.5 million for this or do we find one point? You know, because I'm assuming Douglas Road is similar, you're probably going to get to that slide, but you see where I'm going, right?
Oh, yeah.
I think I can, can help answer our intention.
Yeah.
So we're intending to put these projects out to bid, because when you look at cost estimating, the actual process is what we get back from the bids. Right? That's what it, that's what, that's a better cost estimate for us to know what it's going to cost. Right? The actual bid, because they're just, this is unprecedented times. This is nothing I've seen in the, over 30 years I've been working. And so it's our intent to put these out to bid. And then, and then we're going to have to have the tough conversations about which ones we choose to move forward with at that point. But right now, we don't, and they're, they're coming, they're all, they're actually coming to convergence in a relatively short time. So we'll have some accurate figures. And then we'll, we'll have to, we'll have that conversation here and look at the priorities and look at the ROI that's gained from each project and how much our financial capacity is to afford it at that point.
So you're thinking that convergence might occur in this fall-ish or?
This project's pretty close to being able to be bid. The, the thing with the St. Pete Drive is we're waiting on DOT, so that.
True.
That could be, we're ready to go in a minute, it could be a big back and forth, you know, so that's, there's a lot more uncertainty in the timeline on that. But I would expect really, then, and then the Douglas Road, which we'll talk about in a minute.
Yeah.
We're waiting to find out about a grant. That will, that will kind of help that decision-making process. But I think that it's our intent to enable y'all, you all, to make
Yeah.
that prioritization, you know, in the most transparent way we can.
I have a question.
Yes.
I just want to clarify, because you're saying it happened between the 60 and 90%. So this is not that we estimated badly. This is based on recent events, tariffs, the uncertainty of the market, and the cost of things happening. It's not because we estimated bad in the first place, it's the uncertainty of the times.
That's absolutely correct. And you, and you think about even, you know, we're receiving, when Daniel said earlier, when we're receiving an inject of money into our economy, that's wonderful, but it drives all the prices straight up. So, you know, Pinellas County is expecting a billion dollars to come in for hurricane mitigation funds. So even though that may not directly come to us, it's going to affect all of our projects across the board. Well, that money hasn't even been received yet, right? So all of the, so it changes so, and in between the last five years has been highly unusual, right? And, and, and we talked about it, the pandemic stopped supplies. Like basically, we're, people are still, we're still recovering from that. And then the inject of money from all the ARPA funds, and then two hurricanes. So, so any, I don't know of any way to do good cost estimating in an uncertain environment. And it takes us a lot longer to do projects because we have to, you know, identify grant resources. Then we have to go, we apply for those, then we get them in the next fiscal year. Sometimes we get our funding pulled. The Lafayette sewer lining was in the, the last year's federal budget, but an election came and then it was eliminated out of that. So it, it's just a lot of moving parts. And so when we get the bids back, we're going to have to, to discuss whether or not, how important the project is and how we're going to come up with a match funding, if we come up with a match funding.
And it's important to note that like, we don't actually know how good or bad we are at cost estimating until we actually bid the project.
Right.
What we're doing is updating based on the best available information we have at the time. So it's kind of a, we'll know when we actually bid it. Okay, the next project, the stormwater master plan. So we've been working on this for over a year. We're updating the city stormwater model, recommending and prioritizing projects for the next 10 years, evaluating the current funding, recommending grants to fund projects, and improving our community rating score. So the purpose is that the master plan will result in a more comprehensive and cohesive stormwater project planning process. This project was basically a half a million dollars. And our status is the model has been updated, our level of service analysis has been completed. We're in the middle of project development, and we're beginning the funding evaluation, which those are really the last two steps. Next, we're going to discuss the projects that are now moved to unfunded. So the South Oldsmar Infrastructure Replacement. We have broken this into phases to better, to better set it up for grants. The first phase is to replace the water mains in Country Club, parts of Dunkirk, Patty Drive, and National Orange, and then to relocate a vulnerable forest main. And then Phase Two would be to install new sidewalks and curbs, repave roads, and improve stormwater catch basins. So the purpose is to, is that aging infrastructure is causing water loss and costly repairs, better mobility for all users. And we have a sewer main that's attached to a pedestrian bridge, which is vulnerable to hurricane damage and was, that, that bridge was a little bit damaged in the storm, so it kind of revealed a vulnerability. So we'd be relocating that underground. The status is that the permitting is complete. Final plans and bid documents are to be submitted to the city in June. And final technical specifications are expected in July. And so the design phase will be complete and ready for bid at the end of the summer. And we're pursuing multiple grant opportunities for this project. On the Douglas Road project, this is to replace existing ditches with concrete pipes and widen the roadway by adding a continuous turn lane and add 10-foot shared-use path. The reason we're doing this is to improve the safety and efficiency for all users. And the funding, we have three and a half million of state grants and $6 million, I put plus, of unidentified funding. So the status is that the design was completed and advertised for bid in January 2024. We received one single bid at $11.75 million, and we rejected that in February. So our next steps, we've applied for the ESP, which is Employment Site Program Funding through Pinellas County Economic Development. And if the city's unable to acquire funding through this program, then our next steps will be considered and really discussed with you. Okay, I'm going to turn it to Cindy Neno, our Director of Administrative Services.
Our good friend, yes.
Thank you, Daniel. Good evening, Council.
Good evening, Sandy.
Okay, so throughout this presentation, we will discuss planned investment in capital projects for the next five years. As mentioned previously, various funding sources will be used to pay for these projects, such as general fund revenues, CRA tax increment funding, or TIF revenues, which we'll talk about in quite a little bit later, grant funding from the federal government and the state of Florida, local discretionary sales surtax or penny for Pinellas, local option fuel taxes, utility system revenues collected through your monthly utility bills, impact fees on new development. And sometimes we identify projects that don't have the current resources to pay for them, as Daniel mentioned in the last few slides. When this happened, a project is coded as unfunded, and then we begin the process of seeking grants or other funding so we can make decisions on those projects, particularly projects that are high priority or of great value to the city. Many unfunded projects are new to the CIP and have been identified through master plans, a council priority. Okay, first, we're going to, we're going to look at the CIP through three different lenses. The first one is, will be through funding sources. So as you'll look at the CIP, you'll see the first year. The first year is actually the capital, proposed capital budget for fiscal year '26. We're planning to spend about $14.5 million in fiscal year '26 on capital projects. The following year, $5.9 million. In 2028, $6.3 million. '29, $2.7 million. '20, $3.5 million. The grand total, just over $33 million. I'm not going to get into too many of the details on this slide for the funding sources because we're going to dive in in depth as we go for the presentation. Okay, the next slide for the next summary will be by strategic goals. Economic development, quality of place, which includes infrastructure, transportation, parks and recreation, environmental resiliency, effective community engagement, fiscal responsibility, efficient governmental operations, public safety, which includes law enforcement, fire, emergency operations, and even cybersecurity. In these, in this five-year CIP, you'll see effective governmental operations reflected for a total investment of one point, almost $1.3 million over the five years. Public safety, about $1.4 million over five years. And then the most significant investment is quality of place. The almost $14 million in 2026 with a five-year total of $30 million. And the grand total, you see these numbers a lot through the presentation. Twenty, for 2026, it'd be $14,471,500. And then the grand total, $33,027,000. Okay, we're also going to look at the projects by council priorities. First one being maintain existing infrastructure, the water, which includes Water Reclamation Facility, South Oldsmar Infrastructure, and then Douglas Road. Expand community engagement, establish the downtown corridor, enhance roadway safety for all modalities, execute the Oldsmar Sports Complex improvements, and determine future needs through, future infrastructure needs through master planning. Again, the total investment, $33 million. Fortunately, the numbers match, it means we did it right. Okay. So reflected into CIP, we have enhanced roadway safety, establish downtown corridor, execute Oldsmar Sports Complex improvements, expand community engagement, and maintain existing infrastructure. These priorities are represented in this current CIP. Again, the total of five-year investment is $33 million. Okay, so now that we've gone through the overview, we'll kind of roll into the projects in greater detail by fund, starting with the general fund. The general fund can be viewed as the government, the city government's operating account that supports the general government services, including library, fire, parks and recs, street maintenance, and then general administration. The funding sources for the general fund projects include adware taxes from your tax bill, utility taxes, communication services tax, franchise fees, state shared revenues, charges for services, investment earnings, and then we get a lot of miscellaneous revenues that also contribute to these capital projects. Okay, so this slide's kind of boring, but all of the, the general fund is supported by general fund revenues. So it's very rare to see a grant in the general fund because typically, anything that's funded by a grant is listed in the capital projects fund. Those projects typically have complex funding from multiple sources. So this is pretty normal for the general fund. Total for 2026 is $975,000. The five-year total, $5.6 million. Okay, with that, I am going to turn it over to our Planning and Redevelopment Director, Tatiana Childress.
Thank you, Cindy. Hello, Tatiana Childress, City of Oldsmar Planning and Redevelopment Department Director. So in the Planning and Redevelopment Department, we only have one item, which is the code enforcement truck, and it's planned to be replaced in the fiscal year 2027. It is estimated at $48,000, and it will replace the current code enforcement truck, which was purchased in 2017. So we typically budget them for 10 years, plus or minus. Thank you. With that, I will, next is general fund, and Daniel Simpson, Public Works Director.
Okay, so we have one vehicle planned for technical services, and that's a pickup truck in next fiscal year. This truck is used by our construction inspectors, construction inspection staff, and they use it to monitor the projects on a daily basis. Next is our Streets Division. I will highlight a few of the items on here. First is the three-yard dump truck. This is budgeted for next fiscal year for $100,000. This will replace our 6.7-liter diesel truck and with a, you know, will have a three-yard bed. This truck is used by staff to haul brush, old concrete, fill, and other materials to and from job sites. And the replacement date was extended in fiscal year 2021 because of the lack of availability and price increases. So the current vehicle's a 2009 model.
The thing hung in there a long time.
Next is the sign truck that, this year '27, that budgeted at $75,000. This will replace the 2017 three-quarter ton truck. And this will be the daily work truck for our sign technicians, and it will be outfitted with all necessary items to service signs. Next is the trip hazard elimination project. This is $50,000 budgeted annually to eliminate trip hazards using precision concrete cutting. After they've gone through and cut the sidewalks, there's a report given of any sidewalks that are beyond the capacity of, of precision cutting, and those will be added to our list of sidewalks to be replaced. The reason is to reduce trip hazard falls and improve mobility and pedestrian safety. Next is our Fleet Maintenance Division. We have one item in the next five years, and that is a vehicle lift. This is the.
Oh, I flipped over to, okay. I was at library, the next page was library, so I was.
We went out of order.
It's okay.
Because I have one item that's.
We'll let you.
In a little bit, so.
See? Look at this coordination, y'all. Thank you, Kurt.
Okay, so our one item's the vehicle lift, it's budgeted in fiscal year '28. This is to replace our 30,000-pound vehicle lift with a similar lift. Currently, the lift is 13 years old and is in need of replacement. This lift provides our ability to service the vehicles and heavy equipment. Next is our Director of Library Services, Susan Early.
Thank you, thank you, good evening. Okay, so we're going to be discussing the general fund for the library. As you can see, every year, we have our books and materials budget, and that is annual, and that is so that we can purchase books and materials every year. They're always being published and being put out, so in order to keep the collection current and to meet our goal of quality of place, we use the money to purchase all of our print materials, our DVDs, our audios, our electronic materials like our eBooks and our downloadable audios, and our database subscriptions. There's two other projects that we have over the next five years, both scheduled for fiscal year '28. Because in fiscal year '28 is actually going to mark 20 years that we've been in the current building. So the first one is going to be the library exterior repainting. Repainting the exterior of the library of the building. It was painted over 10 years ago, and it's due for a new coat of paint. And then also, due to the age of the building at this point, there's a plan for a restroom renovation for our three public restrooms. And that would be estimated at $50,000 just to remodel the floors, the van. to remodel the floors, the vanity, the sinks, replace the toilets and the stall partitions.
How's the exterior looking over at the library? A little spruce up going on outside there?
Yes, but we've, we've had it on there, but we wanted to wait until the construction next door is finished.
Yeah.
You know, so that we can-
We still got some new mulch?
Yes, yes, and some nice landscaping, too.
We've got some nice landscaping happening out there.
Yes, yes, so I am going to turn it over to Chip Potts, Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, Susan, good evening, council. Chip Potts, Department of Parks and Recreation, and I have four divisions to review with you this evening, and we'll start in parks. Sorry.
How long were you waiting?
All the evening.
Did you have, did you plan it?
It's like a week I've been waiting to see it, just like that.
All right. So, here you can see the list of projects over the next five years in our plan. Only one item is planned for next fiscal year, and with projects in subsequent years that are most park improvements and equipment replaces that are necessary to maintain our parks and our city grounds. So, equipment, the one piece of equipment that we have scheduled for fiscal year 26 is the replacement of our backhoe. This was purchased in 2011 and is due for replacement. It's used to do heavy moving of rock, trees, and earth and materials that are not capable to move by shovel. It's also used for duree removal during our emergency operations. Yeah, this is a fun one, right?
Yeah, that, that needs to happen.
So, we have a park lift station rehabilitation project planned for fiscal year 27, and this will upgrade the lift stations in four of our parks. The strategic goal that it meets is the quality of place with the priority of maintaining our existing infrastructure. This project will help keep things flowing in the right direction and minimize potential impacts resulting from failure.
He wrote all these down.
He really did, yeah, that's like, he gave us his best five minutes right now.
But everybody's smiling.
Hey, that's what, that's what we do here, right? So, we have another project planned for fiscal year 27, which is the replacement of our brush chipper. This will replace our current brush chipper that was purchased in 2013, and this machine is used to dispose of brush and debris from work projects done throughout the city, and again during emergency operations. All right, moving on to our recreation division.
Before you leave, quick question. I noticed that only, you don't have to go all the way back.
Okay.
But I did notice that there was only one item listed in 2026 that you described, which was the backhoe.
Correct.
To what extent did parks be a team player and move things out to-
You know, we, sports, parks, you know, teamwork, it's all about, hey, we're here for-
Give me the analogy, Chip. Did it happen? It happened a little bit.
We all moved things around.
Yeah.
We all moved things. That's the name of the game, right?
So he's not gonna tell me. There was an incident report, but I can't know the name of the other students. Okay.
That's prohibited.
Okay, that's prohibited.
It's been redacted, it's fine.
It is certainly-
How we produce this budget document, right? It takes a lot of collaboration and looking at citywide priorities. So, that approach serves us well. So when, it, it's hard to identify what, what exact projects get moved where because they, it happens collectively and several times, because we're going through different iterations of the budget. We start, we start capital planning before the holidays, so we start in December. So by the time we get here, we've gone through several iterations of, of where these projects go.
I was just, I was looking at that 2026 versus the 2027 column, and 2027 column looks like Chip gets his stuff.
That doesn't necessarily mean I get it.
That's true.
We have to go through the process again. But I think there's, there's pain on all of our sides, and we do all work together to make it happen, so, and I'm not the only one that moves things around, but, so.
So we can, we can wait on all the 2027 stuff.
Hey, but look at recreation, I'll get all those projects in 26.
Yeah, look.
No, this is our, this is our, these are the projects that are planned for the recreation division over the next five years, and as you can see, there's nothing planned in 2026 as we speak, but we do have a project lined up for fiscal year 27, which is the replacement of doors, storefronts, and windows at the Cypress Forest Recreation Center. And what this project will do is it'll bring those elements up to current standards, because they do not meet current standards right now.
The gym floor at Cypress Forest Rec Center is current fiscal replacement?
No, that project is now in the unfunded category, and I can let Felicia speak to that.
Okay, sorry.
And we had to make hard decisions during the budget process, so, so that one, and the unfunded projects, we'll, we'll talk about them. That means it's not in your, this five-year projection. It doesn't mean that it's not gonna be done, it just means that there's no funding identified in the next five years to, to replace the gym floor.
Okay, but if and when we do have some, we can move it back into the program?
That's correct.
Okay. I just noticed it wasn't there, sorry.
Thank you for noticing. Okay, moving on to the Oldsmar Sports Complex, okay. As you see on the screen here, you'll see our five-year plan as presented. There is only one purchase scheduled for next year with other improvements and replacements scheduled in later years. One thing to take note on this spreadsheet is that it does not include projects that will be later introduced in the 302 account. Highlighting a couple of the projects that we have in the Oldsmar Sports Complex is fiscal year 26. Our one project there is the replacement of our rotary mower. The current mower has over 2,000 hours on it as, and has been under repair more frequently. Of course, this is an important piece of equipment for us to have functional so that we can continue to maintain that facility. In some of our out-years, fiscal year 27 and 28, we have a field renovation project or two field renovation projects split between those two, two years. This will continue to provide the necessary maintenance to the baseball and the softball field playing surfaces due to high usage. Athletic fields typically require minor restorations over time to maintain their safety and playability. Project scheduled for fiscal year 27 is a lean-to equipment canopy. This construction of this canopy would be outside of the maintenance building that's out there now on the backside of that. This meets the goal of efficient operations as it helps to extend the life of the equipment that is stored out back that's otherwise exposed to the elements. Okay, much later project here in fiscal year 29 is the re-siding of the soccer and football fields. As you all know and are aware, our athletic fields take a beating over time due to their activity and high usage, and this is especially up the middle of the fields, as we say, where most of the activity takes place. As I've always said before in the past, you know, turf is our greatest asset out there, beautiful scoreboards, beautiful fencing, buildings, all that fun stuff, but if you don't have the playability of the surface, it's just not gonna meet the needs of the community. All right, facility maintenance, moving on. You guys get me for a little while, this is my last one, I promise. Here again is the five-year improvement plan. We have a few projects requested, mainly addressing necessities due to aging, and I'll continue to highlight a few projects here. One of the bigger projects that we have, actually the biggest project for fiscal year 26, is the replacement of our bucket truck. This truck is a important piece of equipment for us. Our current truck is aging, and it was originally purchased in 2012, and we've, again, recently seen more and more repairs having to take place to that vehicle. It's used frequently not only by Facility Maintenance Group, but it's also used by our Parks Division and Oldsmar Sports Complex Divisions. Our Parks Division does tree work that we don't have to contract out, that they can reach with the 37-foot boom, and it addresses other elevated jobs that you just can't reach safely with a ladder. The council building electrical upgrade, so this is planned for fiscal year 26. This will address electrical issues that are experienced in this very building due to an aged-out and non-supported computerized lighting system that's currently operating or sometimes operating here. This addresses a priority of maintaining our existing infrastructure and will improve the functionality of the lighting by reverting to a more traditional wiring system. Project for the City Hall building across the street, requested for fiscal year 27, is the stucco repair and sealing project. This will address the priority of maintaining existing infrastructure. Again, as I mentioned, it's, it's requested in fiscal year 27, and will address stucco repairs and sealing the building that'll help prevent water intrusions that will then lead to further damages.
$100,000 for a building with a front that's made of glass. Are you serious? Are you serious right now?
Gotta do it, if you wanna keep the water out. Another project for fiscal year 26 is the replacement of the City Hall generator. Again, due to, this is, this is to maintain our existing infrastructure, and this project will result in the downsizing of our current generator because of the deterioration to the generator itself and the frame, and we are mainly focusing on, with this generator, on serving our IT infrastructure and Nate, and our, and our network infrastructure there. So, downsizing, but making sure that we have the capability to have our communications through the network.
Generators can be moved, too, right?
Not these kind, no.
Not these kind.
Not these kind.
So once it's out back of City Hall in fiscal year 26, it is there for forever and ever, amen?
Until we replace it in how many, 20 years, 15 years, whatever. But yeah, it'll be there, it's permanent, it doesn't move, those are not the movable ones, but necessary because that's where our, our network infrastructure sits, so.
Why is our network infrastructure there, Chip? No, I'm just kidding.
Cindy Nano, Director of Administrative Services?
I know the answers to the question, I'm asking them for rhetorical purposes. They're not meant for an answer.
I think it is, I, I think it is important to note that this is a downsized generator, because the, the current generator serves the whole building, but the likelihood during a storm, we're, we're not gonna be there for emergency operations, so, so we don't need a full house generator.
Is the generator gonna be, is it on the ground? Is it lifted?
It is, but it will be elevated.
Yeah, there's a, it's on the, that side of the-
Northeast.
Yeah, northeast side of the staircase.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
The other one is big.
Yes.
It's like the size of a bathroom.
It's big.
It's huge.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chip.
The next is the general fund, public communications. So, we have $30,000 every other year to support public art and art in public places. So, it's a council priority, expands community engagement, provides commissioned public art various places through, throughout the city. The public art advisory board is implementing the public art plan, which includes the installation of public art. It also includes an item to restore the towers at Mobley Wilderness Preserve. They're quite old, so they haven't been touched up, restored since probably installation, and so we estimate it's gonna cost about $50,000 in an out-year to, to restore those towers.
Theoretically, could that restoration take the place of one of the public art annual or bi-annual?
It could. It could.
Just curious.
It, it absolutely could. So it's a public art project, and so we could reduce, I'm gonna go back a couple slides, but you all could make the recommendation, right now we have it in '27, because it really needs to be done. And then we have $30,000, you know, every other year, but, but we could eliminate 2028 and take out that $30,000 then. Now, this year, we're not spending the $30,000 that we have in this current year budget because of the master plan.
Right.
So, we're gonna roll that over to next year's budget, so that's why it's, so you're seeing a rollover amount in '26. We're not gonna spend the $30,000 this year.
Okay.
So, if, 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 if that's a recommendation that you all would like, we can certainly take it out of the budget. And we can discuss it next year as well, because this is, again, it's not in next year's budget.
Just something to keep in mind, because I know that, for example, it's recently been brought to our attention that there's other public art that might be in need of restoration, some statues, you know, things like that to the tune of $18,000, and so while I'm sure the public art advisory board and all of us would love to have new art each, every other year, I think it is incumbent upon that board and us as a council to continue to maintain the art that we have. So if it's gonna cost, you know, 18 for this project, you know, 50 for that project, you know, perhaps instead of something new, the board may consider restoring or upkeep of something we have. Just, just a thought. Sorry, I'm a conservative person. I think it's something that we need to keep in mind, because we can't just keep, it doesn't seem fiscally prudent to me to in 2028 theoretically and 2030 to get new thing, new thing, new thing. We, at some point, that money has to be allocated to maintenance, and we might, it might be a decent time to do it considering that the builder over at the library property, or the developer over at the library property, will be installing their own piece of public art at their cost, so it'll kinda look like we can count that one for that year and still maintain a different facility. Just a thought, just a thought.
Yeah, and I think it is something to, to bring up, so our art in public places is supported by a, one, like a transfer for public art on capital projects. The fund now only has about $26,000 in it, it doesn't have $30,000 in it, so it would be a contribution to general fund. It is, maintenance is an eligible expenditure in that fund, so that fund can be used for maintenance, so.
And for Linda Norris, who I know will be watching this, it's not that I'm not in favor of public art, and I'm also not in favor of moving, you know, or canceling the expenditure, it's more just guiding it toward different things as opposed to new thing, new thing, new thing.
And we are, we're working on a-
I can hear her already.
On a maintenance plan right now as part of the outcome of the public art master plan, that's one of the objectives, is to establish a maintenance plan. Currently, we don't have one. So, we have acquired, you know, new pieces of art, too, that will require maintenance. So those will be examined by, Joan Byrne is going to put together a plan for those, and, and perhaps we can revisit the expenditure of those funds when that plan is developed.
Thank you. What's, what's involved in the restoration of the water tower? Is, does that including like redoing the steps for safety?
No, that's just a mural.
That's just to repaint and seal the thing.
Okay.
Paint's expensive.
That's, that's exactly right. We have to-
Yes.
We have to hire an artist to come in and, and, and restore the paint that's existing. It wasn't sealed properly when it was installed, so it is degrading.
Murals are very popular, though, so redoing it-
I like it, it makes me happy when I drive down there, so.
Yeah. I mean, there's murals in every city, and redoing it could be really beautiful for one year of our public art. Anyway, okay, I'm done.
That counts as something new, though. If you repaint it, that's new.
It kinda feels new to me, for, for 50 grand, it feels pretty new. Just a thought, okay, soapbox, I'm done, good.
So we could, so we, we can certainly talk about that, and we can bring back the maintenance plan before we decide on a future capital projects.
Is it a new, new mural, or is it just a restoration of what's currently there?
Yeah, it's, it's just to touch up the paint and to seal it. It's a very large footprint, so when you're talking about even, even painting the surface with a sealant, that's very expensive to do that.
You have to, you probably have to sand the whole thing down, otherwise you're wasting your time sealing it, and then you have to repaint it, and then you have to seal it.
Right, well, I, I witnessed the, the sealing process of the murals at, at REO's, and so, you know, it gets a very thorough, particular cleaning.
Yeah.
Then an artist comes in and touches up any pigment that needs addressing, and, and then plus with older, as they age, and this one, that's quite old, right? So there's missing paint chunks, all sorts of things, all of that has to be like-
There's weeds growing out of some of it.
Refilled, and then the sealant goes on top of that.
Yeah. Let's not do that in the summer.
Yeah, no.
It's like a January project, yeah. There.
Yeah, there's, there's the, there's the picture of one of them, and you can see that's one of the smaller ones.
Yeah.
You can see how extensive that project is.
The super tall one in the front's big, the little guy in the back is-
And again, that includes no structure- And again, that includes no structural improvements, such just the artwork.
I was so optimistic.
Okay, General Fund Administrative Services.
Okay, we're jumping around. Where are you taking me to, Garrett? Where are you taking me to?
Seventy-three.
Seventy, thank you.
Yeah, this is the last division for the General Fund. So there's really, this is IT budget. There's really not much exciting here. We don't even get a picture for our page, but. So anyway, the IT CIP reflects the city's continued investment into the IT network infrastructure. Our goal is to provide a reliable, efficient and secure, relatively secure network to support the city operations. The hundred and eighty thousand dollars we have scheduled for the annual program is basically to maintain a current inventory of computers, make sure we all have the, the current operating systems, also to upgrade network infrastructure. We don't, we know, we have a plan for what we're going to replace each year, but a lot, because technology changes so fast, a lot of times our, you know, our planned replacements change. We end up replacing one server with, you know, something completely different. So that's why we don't really get into too many specifics on here. And then also the AV system in this very room is, is part of the, the five-year plan. So the total again is one hundred, hundred and eighty thousand a year and nine hundred thousand for the five years. Okay, we've scheduled an optional break. So if you'd like to take a break, we can do that now or we can roll on.
Sure. Okay, I understand. As your vice mayor, I can support the three-minute break. I didn't know you had to go. It's fine.
We'll take a five-minute recess.
Okay. See you in five.
See you in five. And it's, oh, we can start the clock. Push the button.
Push the button.
I am not running the fastidious.
Time to have another juice. There you go.
[inaudible]
And we will reconvene. Thank you.
Oh, roll on. Okay, the next fund that we're going to talk about is the Public Safety Impact Fund. And this fund accumulates resources to, that are used to fund fire suppression-related capital improvements and that are limited to facilities, vehicles and equipment. Let's see. There it goes. It's funded by three main sources. The first one is a one-tenth of one mil transfer from the General Fund, which was set by resolution. This was suspended for the past couple of years to help fund General Fund operations and meet the General Fund needs. It is, we are planning to suspend it one more time for fiscal year 26. So we will talk about that more as we get to the proposed operating budget work session in August. So that will come up. Other transfers from the General Fund are sometimes used to supplement insufficient impact fees that are received. Recently, like one example, years ago, when we were planning for the new T-54 truck, we transferred a million dollars from the General Fund over to Public Safety to cover that purchase. And Public Safety impact fees are collected on new development. So those, those come in occasionally and it's really, you know, it takes a lot of development to really build that up. So, you know, that's not really one of our primary funding sources, so to speak, but. And then we also use some of our investment returns. When we were saving money for T-54, we were able to use investment returns to help fund that project or that purchase, but now the money's gone, so. So that's, we paid for the truck. Okay, with that, I will turn it over to Jason Schwab, our Fire Chief.
Good evening. Jason Schwab, Fire Chief. Yes, what you see here is the proposed five-year plan for this fund totals one million two hundred and fifteen thousand. As you can see, there's no project scheduled for next fiscal year. So I'm just going to highlight some of the projects we have that we're proposing for the following few years. Okay, in fiscal year 27, we're proposing a forty-five thousand dollar project to install direct source diesel exhaust filtration equipment on our apparatus. This project will install diesel exhaust filtration systems directly to the apparatus, which will assist in eliminating known carcinogens. Our current system now is, basically relies on large fans that were installed in the station when it was first built in 2003. These systems actually go directly on the apparatus so that it also eliminates it when we're in the bay, but also when we're on scene of different incidents in other places. And then in fiscal year 28 and 29, we're proposing a replacement of twenty portable radios. That will cover one for each position on all the apparatus and support staff vehicles. Our current radios were purchased in 2018. They're soon to be reaching end of life. We were notified by the manufacturer that our current model no longer be serviceable, you know, coming very soon. Usually when they put out a new model, then they don't service the old ones anymore.
Change the charger cord.
Yeah, yeah, pretty much. This replacement will occur over two fiscal years of the state of 28, 29. So we're proposing a hundred thousand for each year. And then also in fiscal year 29, proposing replacement of all station windows and glass entry doors. That's at a cost of a hundred thousand dollars. The current windows, again, are original to the station constructed in 2003. Replacing these will also enhance our mitigation preparedness processes for storm events. We do house personnel there through storms, you know, that function in EOC operations. And then also in fiscal year 29, proposing replacement of all six apparatus bay doors. And that's at, for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The current door is original to the station. They were also recommended to be replaced as part of the wind mitigation study prepared by Arda in 2023. And then also for this project and the window project, we've submitted for grant funding through the Florida Department of Emergency Management Hurricane Loss Mitigation Program. So we completed that, that application in April. We're just, you know, in the process of waiting to see that through.
If we get new windows and doors, do we get an insurance credit?
Do we?
Maybe.
Probably, yeah.
I got it for my house, I'm just saying, maybe.
A hundred and eighty dollars.
All right, move it up a year.
Are we going to take over at the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar HVAC? We'll just leave that for later. Okay.
Okay, the Community Redevelopment Agency. I'm going to spend a little bit of time talking about the, the finances for the Community Redevelopment Agency. So basically, there are three main funding, funding sources for the CRA. The city abhorrent TIF revenues, county abhorrent TIF revenues, multimodal impact fees, and then we do get investment earnings on the money that's sitting in there that we also use to help fund the projects. The financing is rather complex. Kind of going back to the list, the city TIF is, are the abhorrent revenues generated by property within the CRA boundary that are transferred from the city's general fund to the CRA. The county TIF is kind of the same thing, but it's from the county's general fund. The multimodal impact fees, you know, as with the other impact fees are collected on new development. It's kind of important to note that impact fees are not collected when a building is demolished and something is, is rebuilt in that place, like particularly a house, unless the use changes for that property. But our planning director can get into that some more. Okay, so basically, all revenues in this fund, including the investment earnings, have a restricted use and can only be spent within the CRA. It cannot, the money cannot be used to support city services such as public safety and the parks. Let's see. Okay, the next couple of slides are directly from Section 163 of the Florida statutes. This is very important information to know, so I won't try to summarize it or paraphrase it. I'll just, I'll just read it. So by definition, the community redevelopment area means, let's see, means an area, a slum area, a blighted area, or an area in which there is a shortage of housing that is affordable to residents of low or moderate income, including the elderly or a coastal and tourist area that is deteriorating and economically distressed due to outdated building density patterns, inadequate transportation and parking facilities, faulty lot layout or inadequate street layout or a combination thereof which the governing body designates as appropriate for community redevelopment. Okay, the purpose. Purpose of the CRA, it directs investment for the elimination and prevention of the development of, or spread of slums and blight, or the, for the reduction or prevention of crime, or for the provision of affordable housing, whether for rent or for sale, to residents of low or moderate income, including the elderly. It may include slum clearance and redevelopment in a community redevelopment area, or rehabilitation and revitalization of coastal resort and tourist areas that are deteriorating and economically distressed, or rehabilitation or conservation in a community redevelopment area, or any combination or part thereof in accordance with a community redevelopment plan. It may include the preparation of such plan. Okay, so here is a, a map of the CRA area. Again, our planning redevelopment director can tell you what all the colors mean. So the CRA trust fund was established in 1996. It's for a thirty-year period. It's scheduled to end in 2026. Property values in the CRA rose by nine point eight-two percent during the year of fiscal, during year 2023, which is actually the valuation date of January 1st, 2024, compared with four point eight-two percent citywide, you know, during that same period. The city is currently working on a feasibility study to evaluate the possibility for an extension. Okay, we're, we're going to use, kind of, it'll seem like I'm repeating a lot of these numbers and, and concepts, but the funding is pretty complicated, so sometimes you have to, I have to go through it several times myself just to, to keep up with it. So for the funding, there is a base year. The abhorrent taxes, your property taxes, are calculated on untaxable value of the property within the CRA boundary in the base year, which is 1996. And that amount is retained in the General Fund to support governmental services. The city redirects all other abhorrent taxes collected in the CRA over and above the base year amount to the special district, the CRA, instead of the General Fund. The county redirects ninety-five percent of their portion of their general fund abhorrent taxes in the CRA area over the base amount to the special district instead of the general, their general fund. The ninety-five percent depends on the level of slum and blight that was established in 1996. Oops. Okay, so more, more funding basics. The only amount collected on taxable property, let's see, only the amount collected on taxable property values in the base year 1996 in the CRA is retained to fund, city retained in the General Fund to support general government operations and expenditures. The amount above the base year may not be used to support general government operations not related to planning and carrying out the community redevelopment plan, including fire and EMS, emergency operations, law enforcement, legal services, parks and recreation, planning and permitting, engineering, technical services, general maintenance and administrative services. It cannot be used for governmental buildings within the CRA. Funds diverted to the CRA can only be used for CRA-related activities as authorized by the Florida statutes. Okay, more basics. The 2024 CRA total municipal taxable, taxable value is a hundred and thirty-two million seven hundred and thirty-three thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars, which generates approximately five hundred and ten thousand and ninety-five percent in city tax revenues at four point oh-five mils. The city's base year 1996 taxable value is sixteen million eight hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred dollars, equating to about sixty-five thousand dollars of abhorrent tax revenue that can be retained in the General Fund and used to fund city operations, both inside and outside the CRA. The county also diverts a portion of its abhorrent taxes, collecting in parcels within the CRA boundary over the base year. In fiscal year 25, the CRA will receive five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars from the county. The graphic on the bottom, the bar chart, the, the line graph, the graph and chart, kind of shows that eighty-seven percent of the total abhorrent revenue generated within the CRA boundary is, that's diverted to the CRA fund. So that's, you know, a big chunk of it. Thirteen percent of the CRA abhorrent can be used for general government. Thirteen percent of the CRA adblocker can be used for general governmental services. That's the amount that's retained in the general fund. That includes the, the base amount, the sixteen, the calculation on the sixteen, eight seventy-six, four hundred, which is about sixty-five thousand, plus, you know, an adjustment for the ninety-five percent.
A question. You may be getting ready to go over this, I'm not sure. You mentioned that we do get money allocated from the county, from their portion of the adblocker that they collect. Does that go into our city fund, or that's held on their end for use in the CRA area?
It's given to the city. We invoice them every year. Actually, we just sent an invoice out a couple of weeks ago. So that money, it comes from the county's general fund, and it is deposited into the Oldsmar CRA.
Okay, so then a follow-up question. If we are unable, if we do a feasibility study and, as a city, we decide not to continue the CRA, do we still retain the funds that the county allocated towards that area, or does it go back to the county?
We won't get it anymore.
Right.
I don't know if that was your question, or...
Well, what, what they've already, what we've invoiced them for, it's already in our account. We retain that money. It can be put into our general fund to use for...
We would...
How does that work?
Yeah, we would spend that. You want to take that?
So we would retain the money that we've already received through the end of the sunset period in the CRA fund. We still have restrictions on how we can spend that money in the CRA fund.
Okay.
But we will be able to retain the money that's already in the account.
Okay, thanks.
As long as we spend it on the, on the CRA, and we spend it according to the CRA development plan.
Okay.
When in twenty twenty-six? With the sunset period? When? What, what date?
On this chart, you can see where the...
No, the day. What does the sunset period? September twenty-six.
Okay.
And in, and in order to, to extend, if, if the council decides to extend the CRA, we have to do another CRA plan. And it will take a lot of regulatory requirements as far, there's a lot, there's a process involved. It also will take the county to approve our request for an extension for CRA. If the council decides to extend the CRA.
Did anybody see the county commission meeting just last week where Tarpon Springs said, can we please do a CRA? And it was, what, three, three, two vote? And those nays were strong. They basically said, you can go ahead and do the study, have fun with it, but we aren't necessarily approving your CRA. For an area off of US nineteen in Tarpon where there's like a Chili's and essentially the argument for, well, Kathleen Peters, Commissioner Peters was completely against CRAs, but some of the other commissioners were like, you know, listen, you got a Chili's, you got a bunch of stores and restaurants up there, you know, I don't see how it would pass the criteria for the state, but also we're done giving you money back. But in order to get to that point of a yes, no vote from the county, we would have to spend those funds on the study. You could just leave that thing up.
So we have already spent the money for the study that was authorized by council. GAI has done the study. They will be coming in July to present their findings. At that point, I would ask that you all make a decision if we want to proceed with any steps further. So we have the, the bulk of what we would need, and it's called a finding, Findings of Necessity. We, we have that already prepared. So that would then start the process. However, our CRA master plan, that would be a new item for that. So we would have to have a new plan in place, because our plan is from nineteen ninety-six.
How much does it cost to make a CRA master plan? Ballpark.
I mean, we saw what the food truck ordinance costs, so it depends on what we require and what we require as far as community engagement, too, is a big portion of that.
If you back up a slider to Cindy, okay, stay right there. So how would we be able to make that argument? I guess we'll find out. When we look at nineteen ninety-six and see the tax base of sixteen million, and have the tax base is a hundred and thirty-two, a hundred and thirty-three million dollars, we would, we would go to the county and say, yeah, this area, the same area here is still with a straight face. Are you going to go? Would you go with that? I'm just curious. It's hard for me to conceptualize how that gets approved.
Yeah, you know, I, I follow the direction of the council.
Yeah, there's a cart way ahead of the horse right now. No, I'm not discussing that. No, I'm just, I'm here, I'm here for CIP, so.
It's part, this is all part of it.
My guess is that there'll be some robust discussion over the next few months about what we're doing.
All right.
Guess it started today, you know? Sorry, Cindy. We like to argue.
Okay, another slide, how the funding works. This chart shows graphically how over time, property values and taxes generated in the CRA have increased. At the conclusion of the CRA, the taxes levied on the full taxable value of the property within the CRA will become available to help fund city operations. In nineteen ninety-six, at the start of the CRA, the base value, sixteen million, eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred dollars, which equated to, equates to about sixty-five thousand dollars of adblocker taxes. Twenty twenty-four, currently, the evaluation as of January first, twenty twenty-four, almost a hundred and thirty-three million. The tax, taxable, adblocker tax of five hundred and ten thousand. The January first, twenty twenty-five values, we expect to get them tomorrow. We were hoping to get them a day early, but it didn't happen for us, so.
I'll call you. I'll call her.
I'm sure Felicia will send it to you. Okay, Tatiana Childress, our planning director, will just over, do an overview of the projects in the CRA.
Thank you again, Cindy. So, hello again. So we have four planned projects under the Community Redevelopment Area Fund, with a total proposed budget of four point oh three million dollars for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six, twenty thirty. Two of these projects are budgeted in fiscal year twenty twenty-six to support the north side of St. Petersburg Drive Complete Street Project, including the portion of the associated roundabout located within the CRA district boundary. And Daniel Simpson already described all the details of the Complete Streets Project and also the roundabout. So the funding from the CRA fund for the north side of St. Pete project is scheduled at one point, is budgeted at one point seven, seven million, and the roundabout portion is planned, is budgeted at one point oh one million dollars. On the next slide, I have a couple of other projects that we have. So next is a project planned for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, and this one is to evaluate the city-owned property near the library in multiple parcels along the State Road five eighty. The city now owns the entire block between Exeter Street and Jefferson Street along the State Road five eighty, and the proposed budget for this project is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the project aligns with the council priority to establish the downtown corridor and includes a feasibility study and conceptual design for the feet, for the future use of these parcels, ensuring city-owned properties provide the greatest benefit to Oldsmar residents.
Tatiana, before you leave that item, quick question, and maybe Garrett, you might be able to answer this. On page one oh three, I see the item that she just talked about for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but on the summary page on one oh two, is this lumping together the mobility improvements and the city-owned property evaluation enhancements?
There's fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-six and a hundred thousand dollars in twenty twenty-two.
Okay, so that's divided out over two years.
Yes, one is the study and then the conceptual, the other one is conceptual design, if I believe correctly, so twenty...
And I think it's also important to note, this is all contingent on what St. Pete Drive comes back in from the bids.
That's true. Because if it's super expensive, then dump that money toward the north side of St. Pete Drive. Okay.
Yes, so in the last project here, we have the mobility improvements, and this is really a continuous project, so this is scheduled currently for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-eight, with the estimated budget of one point one million dollars. This is a comprehensive streetscape project, which includes right-of-way upgrades such as sidewalk replacement, lighting, ADA accessibility, crosswalks, signage, traffic calming, striping, landscaping to enhance mobility, walkability, and accessibility within the CRA district boundaries. And as Felicia mentioned, this is something that is currently sort of, kind of like an unfunded state, and it depends on the funding that we receive, or actually, the bid that we receive for the St. Pete Drive, once we place it.
Please.
For another bid. And next, we have Capital Improvement Fund. Back to Cindy Nigga.
Thank you. Okay, the Capital Projects Fund, this is the fund where we put all of the, the complex governmental projects that have very complex funding, usually from multiple sources, including grants from Penny for Pinellas. So the primary funding source, the biggest funding source probably in this fund is Penny for Pinellas. It's been a tremendous asset for the city, and we've used it to fund a lot of our, our major projects. Okay, so another funding source in the Capital Improvement Fund is LOFT, or Local Option Fuel Taxes. And I'll get into that a little bit to tell you exactly what that is. Then the grants, federal state grants, and then we have some investment earnings. Okay, Penny for Pinellas. This basically started in nineteen ninety and has generated over twenty million dollars for the city that was been, that's been used for infrastructure and capital, other capital projects. It's collected by the county and shared with twenty-four cities based on population. The county keeps about fifty-two percent, and then it just, it's supposed to remaining forty-eight, forty-eight percent among the cities. About one-third of the revenue comes from tourists and seasonal residents, and then the revenue, the revenue always stays within the county, so it doesn't go anywhere else. The local option fuel tax, or LOFT, is collected at the fuel pump. It's assessed by the gallon, so even when fuel prices go up, we don't get any extra money. To kind of put it in perspective, you have to buy thirty gallons of gas for the city to get a penny. So we use it for street resurfacing, but by law, we have to use it for transportation-related projects. So right now, it partially funds our street resurfacing program, and then we use penny money for the rest of it.
About thirty cents a year that I donate.
You're welcome.
Okay, so the total next year for, total next year for the Capital Improvement Fund, Capital Projects Fund, is about four point five million dollars. And the, and then over five years, about six point five million dollars. Again, Penny for Pinellas is a significant and important revenue source for us, it funds our major projects. Next year, it's going to fund about two point three million dollars of projects, and then about three point six over the five-year period. Couple of the major projects include St. Pete Drive and then lighting improvements, upgrades at the city parks. Again, the local option fuel taxes will be used to fund street resurfacing, with the remaining funds coming from the penny money. We're going to receive, we're expecting to receive grant funds for St. Pete Drive, state and federal grants. And again, the total, four point five million for next year, about six point five for the five-year period. Okay, next up is Chip Potts.
All right, back again. All right, so a couple of projects to highlight in the CIP coming forward. The first one for fiscal year twenty-six is the light upgrade at Bicentennial Park. So this project will be requested next fiscal year, and this will upgrade the existing metal halide lights that are at Bicentennial Park right now to new energy-efficient LED lights. This will include the basketball, pickleball, and the tennis courts. It'll provide for more consistent lighting, as well as reduced maintenance costs. Another project requested for Bicentennial Park, this time in fiscal year twenty-seven, will be the playground replacement. This one, the current playground at Bicentennial Park replacement will address the strategic goal of quality of place, and currently, the playground there is showing signs of age, and this replacement will provide the opportunity to inject more excitement into the park for families while also providing a safe place to play. And the last project I have to present for you tonight is the Oldsmar Sports Complex Field Lighting Project for fiscal year twenty-six. This project would be the second and final phase of the current upgrade to the athletic field lighting project at the Oldsmar Sports Complex. Currently, the lights on baseball fields one, two, and seven are being retrofitted as we speak, so that's very exciting. This phase will continue to retrofit the remaining lights on the baseball and softball fields three, four, five, and six, as well as soccer fields one, two, and three. The retrofits, again, provide more consistent lighting, increase energy efficiency, and will require less maintenance. Daniel Simpson.
I have a, I'm sorry, I have a quick question. The replacement of the Jungle Gym at Bicentennial, is that a complete, like, take out the whole thing and replace with something?
Absolutely.
Okay.
How many times has that one been moved?
Moved?
Yeah, like, out here, out here, out here.
Couple times, maybe.
Since I've been on council? Just curious. Well, you know what's so interesting, though, right? So we had this debate a while back, because it was, there, there's a park in the back at Mobilee Bayou, and then there's a park in the front at Bicentennial. I don't know who put it that way, but that's what we have. That's what we were left with. And there are people in both areas, but a lot of kids play at the park at Bicentennial because their parents are either doing pickleball, tennis, or basketball. So there was this ongoing debate that I had with the previous city manager as to whether or not the Bicentennial one, this one should just be ripped out. And I said, no, absolutely not. But since then, it's been moved down. I understand that playground equipment is more of a want than a need, but...
I wouldn't debate that.
I think it's, you know, well, when you look at our, our surveys, right? Our, our surveys from residents, what they love most about our city, you know, what they appreciate the most in our parks.
Playground's ranked five on the list.
It's right up there. So I, I love lighting upgrades, but wow, eight, twenty-five, more than three-quarters of a million dollars for Oldsmar Sports Complex for those lights, like...
Those, the current lights are over twenty-five years old, they're out of warranty, and we'd spend, I hate to say, but there's, I mean, forty percent at any one time, forty percent of the lights are out because of either ballast or bulbs or electrical issues.
So we're over there with that bucket truck we're going to replace.
And it's about, Mike, how much is it to rent a crane? It's about a thousand.
The bucket truck's not tall enough.
Yeah, the bucket truck is definitely not tall enough for that. No, the bucket truck only goes to thirty-seven feet. These are like seventy-five feet.
Wow.
So, but, and it's expensive to rent a crane for us, or a lift for us to go out there and replace the bulbs and staff time, so.
So you're saying we need to replace the lights?
Yes, well, yes.
And this doesn't, that, that number doesn't include the investment that we're making this year into the sports complex for lighting. So this is, this is a phased project.
Right, because we did the baseball side.
Currently, we're doing fields one, two, and seven, like, like I said, as we speak, they're out there now.
And then this is...
And this will be the rest, the other half of the baseball side, and then the whole soccer football area.
Soccer side, okay.
Yeah.
Thanks, Chip.
You're welcome.
Okay, our next project is the City Hall slash EOC Building Design. This is budgeted for fiscal year twenty-six at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The project is, the funding for twenty twenty-six is to complete a feasibility study, preliminary engineering report, and site selection for a new city hall and EOC. The building will be a center for daily operations, and it is proposed to be elevated and hardened to be protected from flooding and category-five hurricane winds. The reason for this is that the city hall and the municipal service center need maintenance and are not constructed to be resilient in hurricanes. City hall is proposed to be demolished when the downtown redevelopment moves forward. All right, our next project is the citywide resurfacing. This is set up for every other year right now, with project costs of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for next fiscal year. fiscal year. This project is to mill and resurface asphalt roadway pavement of existing roadways based on the resurfacing priorities. And after the roads are resurfaced, traffic markings are replaced in thermoplastic. The remaining streets in East Lake Oaks neighborhood is what's planned for fiscal year '26. Street resurfacing program is preventative maintenance for transportation infrastructure, and the more we put it off, the more expensive it gets. Next is the sidewalk and curb replacement. So for next fiscal year, we have $85,000 of programmed. This will replace deteriorating and non-conforming sidewalks and curbs in different areas of the city, including ADA improvements. Sidewalks and ADA ramps in the East Lake Oaks neighborhood are planned for replacement in fiscal year '26. So we're kind of putting those two together in a, like, little mini-project. Maintenance of existing infrastructure, improving mobility for all users by updating the meeting, and to meet the ADA requirements is why we're doing this. All right, we're back to Cindy.
Okay, moving right along with the Water Sewer Operating Fund. Okay, the Water Sewer Operating Fund projects, they are basically funded from your utility bill. That funds, you know, that's the primary funding source for this, these projects. There's other user fees that are collected from your utility bills, and then other connection fees and different things that are also contribute to the projects, as well as federal and state grants. We don't have, as you see in the next slide, we don't have any federal or state grants scheduled for the next year, or next five years. We're getting grants for the control building, but that is, it's all budgeted in this year. It's going to end up rolling forward into '26, but right now, it's all in '25. So for the Water Sewer Operating Fund revenue, next year, we're expected to fund $2.6 million of projects, and then over the five-year period, over $10 million. We are going to schedule 300,000 of impact fees that we have been saving up for a project in 2028. So it is important to note that the impact fees can only be used for capacity expansion projects, and they can't be used for general maintenance, or, you know, anything just to rebuild something we already have. It has to expand the capacity. We also have to have the money available, so we have to have the money in the funds to be able to do that. Okay, that's all I have for Water Sewer Fund, so I'm going to turn it back over to Daniel and for the next hour or so.
All right. First division is utilities maintenance. We have $930,000 budgeted in equipment and projects over the next five fiscal years. I'm going to highlight a few of each division as we go. So first is our mobile pumps. We have three scheduled for replacement. Well, really, two are replacements of mobile pumps, one is a replacement of a generator with a pump. We find that pumps are a safer way to deal with our lift stations when they're in failure. So these are used to hook up to a lift station and pump down the sewage, generally when it's a power outage, but it also can be when we have mechanical failures. It's critical, they're critical during emergencies. Next is our lift station rehab project. This is annual, basically an annual update of lift stations, and we've built in some inflation. Piping valves and pumps will be assessed and replaced as needed, and electrical panels raised for flood protection where necessary. So as lift stations age, the various systems degrade or inefficient, and the city has 26 lift stations that must be maintained, and we, we program to replace one, like, rehab one every year. Next is our crane truck. This is for $150,000. This is replacement, based on the scheduled replacement schedule. In 2000, it's 2014 is the current vehicle, and fiscal year '27 is when it's planned to be replaced. This, this will be upgraded with, include a welder and generator, and this will save transportation time and ability to resolve issues in the field. But these are used to pull the pumps out of the lift stations, but also a daily work truck for the crews. Our next division is distribution and collection. Several projects in this division over the next five fiscal years, with $3,682,000 to be, that we're planning on spending. So first is the gravity sewer lining project. We have a project cost of $1,130,000. This is to align gravity sewer piping and manholes using cure-and-place pipe. This is like putting a cast inside of a pipe, instead of like your arm on the outside. So this past, this current fiscal year, we've had a larger project that we've been planning to do Lafayette, and, and that, that pipe is one of the main arteries into the plant. But this project will reduce infiltration from groundwater, and extend the life, existing life of the pipes, and reduce the quantity of water that's coming into the wastewater plant for treatment. And this rehabilitation is requirement of Senate Bill 712 that was signed into law in July of 2020. Next is our meter reading hardware for this coming fiscal year at $40,000. This will be new belt clip transceivers for meter reading, and truck-mounted transceivers for meter reading vehicles. So with the upgrades and the substantial amount of water meters across the city, staff requires new devices for reading new meters more efficiently. All right, our next project is the Forest Lakes Boulevard Utility Relocations, and we're planning on this being in fiscal year '27. The schedule is really based on the Pinellas County Phase 3 widening for Forest Lakes Boulevard. This widening will put some of our utilities in conflict, and this will be the adjustments necessary for it. It is a good time, there, there is a pipe that's a water main of a material that is not desirable, that we will be replacing with this mobilized contractor. So we are planning to enter into a JPA, which is a joint partnership agreement with the county, where we basically pay their contractor to do our work. The reason we do this is that roadway construction, other projects, they necessitate our right, our moving of the utilities. All right, our next project is the sewer line assessment, and this is every other year, we budget $50,000, or nearly every other year. So this project is to assess sewer and gravity sewer lines with cameras, and to identify needed maintenance and repairs. So it's a proactive approach to maintaining our sanitary sewer system, and identifying our piping for failures. This is a requirement of Senate Bill 712, and it's, it makes sense, because it identifies our problems early, and we can solve those before they cause more expensive problems. Okay, next, we're to the water reclamation facility. So you can see there's one project using impact fees on our list, which is the re-aeration tank expansion. But we have $3,125,000 planned over the next five years in this fund. And I should say that we're doing our master plan, as, as we discussed earlier, and that will prioritize projects for future budgets. So there, there will be, this may look a little different in future budgets that we'll bring before you.
With potentially new projects mixed in, as well as, you know, this is, this new project is now an emergency, or this existing project is now moved back, both ways?
There, there's likely to be like a project or two that are new, but it's more putting them in an order that, you know, of what's most important. So the first project, this is the back generator assessment. So at our wastewater facility, we have two generators, I mean, one for kind of the front half, and one for the back half, which you all have been there recently, so you know it a little better than most of the time when we meet. So this is an assessment of the back generator, and it's for $250,000 in fiscal year '26. So limited process, processes are connected to generator power. So our generators are designed for, basically, to function during normal outages, you know, a few hours, the power's down, not for like a few weeks. So they only serve, only like one pump at each system. So this project will be to design the loading and put all of the pumps and all of the stuff on the generator, so that we can fully run the plant on generator power for as long as we need, as long as we have diesel. You can, it's probably self-evident why this is important to us, but generator power is important during, when we don't have power, because the sewer plant needs to run continuously. The other problem is during hurricanes, that's when we have our outages more often, and that's when we have our most, like, the highest flows. Our next project is the internal pump station replacement. This is in fiscal year '26 and '27, for $490,000 total. So we plan to replace each of the four 20-horsepower vertical turbine pumps and motors in the internal pump station, which you can see right there in the picture. And add roof protection to extend the life of the equipment. This lift station collects backwash water from the filters and pumps it back to the head of the plant for processing. The pumping station's showing signs of where it's reached its useful life, and these are vital to the treatment process. Next is our technology improvements. We have $50,000 budgeted in fiscal year '27. We won't go into detail about what we're going to do out there, but this is just to keep us as safe as practical. Next is our filter number four capacity project. In fiscal year '26, we have $880,000 budgeted. There are currently three filter bays in use, and this is a fourth. We have space for it, but it hasn't been built out. This project is to build out that fourth filter bay. And so this is one of the three projects we need to do, to be, to be able to rerate the plant. The aeration project was one, this is the second, and then the next project will be the third. So the rerating of the plant will make us able to handle permitted capacity of just under 3 million gallons a day, and that will make us more resilient for hurricanes specifically, but also be able to handle any growth that we could imagine in the city of Oldsmar. So next is the re-aeration, re-aeration tank expansion. You're looking at that here in this picture. So this is budgeted for fiscal year '28 at $1.3 million. And so this is to expand this tank, to add volume, and this will provide additional treatment capacity and make us able to rerate the plant. Okay, next is the reverse osmosis water treatment facility. We have $2.25, $5 million budgeted over the next five fiscal years, and we'll go into some detail on that. First is our acidizing of production wells. This will be over the next five years at $245,000. Acidizing the production wells will improve, it's basically routine maintenance on wells, that the, there is buildup of limestone over time from pulling water out of the wells, and this is to put acid into, dissolve that, and which will hopefully help us produce more water and have, at a higher water quality. And this was recommended in the water supply plan. So we have a schedule of doing a few pumps every, or a few wells every year. Next is our carbon dioxide system improvements, and this is in the next fiscal year '26 and '27, $800,000 total. So the plan is to install one carbon dioxide storage tank and one skid panel, providing the reliability, improving the reliability of the carbon dioxide dosing system. So additional storage is necessary to mitigate intermittent supply chain issues and to provide system redundancy. CO2 is a, critical to our process at the RO plant.
We need it more than the beer companies. It's not fair. I remember being very surprised, learning during our recent tour about the fluctuation and the extraordinary expense for CO2.
Yes.
It just blew my mind, among many other things we learned on, on those field trips.
Next is our RO feed pump motors and pumps. This is budgeted over the next three fiscal years. This is to rehabilitate the three 200-horsepower feed pump motors and pumps over the next three fiscal years. These motors are nearly seven years old, and they, they drive the primary treatment process, reverse osmosis. And they're critical for water production and regulatory compliance. Like, just like we were talking about in the WRF, we have a $190,000 program for cybersecurity updates in the RO plant, which we won't detail here. Next, the next project is the blending disinfection improvements in fiscal year '27 at $200,000. So this isn't to install a sodium hypochlorite system for emergency use, so that when we take on Pinellas County water, we're able to disinfect and match their, their way they disinfect, and it'll make it more seamless. This will make us more resilient, as the Pinellas County system is our continuity of operation plan. Next is the RO well pumps. So there's $25,000 each fiscal year. Replace or rehabilitate 1130 horsepower submersible well pumps. These well pump motors are aging and nearing their useful life, and it is imperative they are working to supply water to the plant, and then to, to the city. Okay, in fiscal year '28, we have a degasification system rehabilitation for $120,000. This is to replace the media in the degasification stacks used for off-gassing hydrogen sulfide from the raw water by biological odor scrubbers and replacing the fan impeller. This is what removes the rotten egg smell from the water. And the hydrogen sulfide is naturally occurring in our water, and so this has removed it so that we have better smelling water at your house. All right, next is our environmental management division, and we have a vehicle, a pickup truck to be purchased in fiscal year '27. Okay, so we're going to go back to Cindy for a minute to talk about Stormwater Utility Fund.
Okay, good news, this is the last fund that we're going to talk about tonight. So, okay, so the Stormwater Utility Fund is funded from your utility bill. There's charges for services that are billed, we charge for residential stormwater fees, commercial stormwater fees. We also have grants, federal and state grants, to help fund the projects, and then investment earnings. With the proposed rate increase for fiscal year '26, which we'll talk about at the operating budget work session in August, the Stormwater Fund will be able to support about $1.1 million in projects next year, and it's projected to be able to support about $3.1 million over the five-year period. Daniel talked about the State Street culvert earlier in the presentation. So this project, you'll see the federal and the state funding on the schedule. And of course, we just found out that the project is going to be about a million dollars more than we expected. When we get to the final version of the CIP, we'll have the, we should have the costs updated, and then hopefully we'll have, we'll start working on the funding options for the, for the additional $1.5 million we're still looking for, so. Okay, with that, I will turn it back over to Daniel to discuss the projects. Okay, uh, with that, I will turn it back over to Daniel to discuss the projects.
Okay, first we have a stormwater pump, this is new, at, for fiscal year twenty six, at sixty-eight thousand dollars. This is a pump that we can use for de-watering. So the plan would be to have this pump to lower levels of our storage system before rain events. And then after a rain event, if we have flooding, to be able to move the water off the road. Um, this also could be used, since, you know, pumps are important when we have emergencies for many reasons. If we needed it, we could use it at a lift station. But this would be dedicated for stormwater for most of the time. All right, the next is our outfall manatee excluder in fiscal year twenty seven. Um, this project is budgeted at one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, and this is to create a physical barrier with pilings at the outfall of the Mobley Pike Bayou Park. During king tide events, manatees enter the stormwater ponds at Mobley Bayou. And, and when water levels fall, they are trapped. FWC has requested a barrier be created to reduce this occurrence.
I like how you use the word requested, gently suggested.
Well, really, the, the justification is like, if a manatee dies, then we have, we would have to pay a fine, so.
How, how often does this happen?
So, oh, this has happened like, five times.
How often has this happened, the manatee's getting trapped?
It's about once every two years, but, yeah.
And then there's a big production and the news comes, and they lay the thing out on the tarp, and it's really sad and scary, and it's not good. It's really dramatic.
I wanna say the manatees, I'm not making this seem like I don't wanna do this project, I do, I just, I'm curious how often it happens.
Yeah, I was just, I think it's, it's requested a barrier, but it's one of those things where they're not really requesting it.
Right.
Sean, just to be clear, you're not anti-manatee either, are you?
He's hesitating.
Everybody should go on record, we're pro ma- we're pro-manatee here.
Pro-manatee, for sure. Also, I could stick a chain-link fence out there, but I'm sure your plan's better.
We like to hear all good ideas.
Even that one.
All right, next is our Moxon Creek Bank Stabilization Project, and this is in fiscal year twenty seven and twenty eight, um, for six hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, so this is to stabilize the banks of Moxon Creek between Pepper Tree Drive and Oakleaf Boulevard using a sustainable solution. This is to maintain our existing infrastructure. Erosion causes sediment to be transported downstream, decreasing the capacity of the creek. If erosion continues, it could threaten the structures immediately next to the, um, creek. So this project is, we do have a grant for the design, um, of a hundred fifty thousand dollars. So the design is in twenty seven, and then our plan is to construct, do the construction in twenty eight. Okay, next is our stormwater master plan projects. Right now, there's, we've budgeted money in fiscal year twenty six and twenty seven. The stormwater master plan will result in recommended projects. This will be, this funding here will be to execute a few of the smaller projects, you know, to just jump, get a jump on these projects and start making our level of service better. And then future pro- budgets will have the prioritized projects. That's one of the, the plans is to lay out a, um, a schedule with projects that are funded, and really to give options of how fast we'd like to move through that. So the master plan will provide a roadmap to raising the level of service of our stormwater infrastructure in the city. All right, and then finally with, um, City Manager.
Thank you, Daniel.
Thanks, Daniel. So let's talk about unfunded projects. First of all, I wanna tell you that a list of unfunded projects in the back of a, and part of a capital improvement plan is, um, extremely unique. Um, I haven't seen any other budgets that include it. And so, it's not a requirement. But I feel it's important so that we don't lose sight of what our future holds for us. I think it's a key to financial solvency for our community, which is why we put them in here. So as part of our long-term capital planning, we maintain this list of unfunded projects. There are initiatives that have been identified by staff, some of them are identified by community members, some of them are through master plans, but currently, they don't have a secure funding source. And so the, the projects are not included in this year's CIP because we have budget limitations, right? As we've talked about before, the CIP is actually a reality-based outcome budget. Um, but we track them so we can quickly apply for grants when new funding opportunities become available. Grants are very specific, right? So a grant may open up for X, so if we have it on the list, we could apply if there's no match money availa- if there's no match requirement and those things. So it's important to have that list available. By maintaining the list, we ensure that no needs forgotten, and the list will grow. So I, I wanna say that, right? So, um, uh, infrastructure is aging throughout all of Florida, throughout the whole country, really, right? So, um, these, our needs have never been really previously identified in the future as they are now. So, needs have already always been there. So when we, when we first build a library, we know that there's gonna be a need to replace parts of that later on. But they've never been on a list farther than your six-year document, basically. Now, our document's five years this year, right? But so, I just wanna kinda put it in context for you all. And so, the projects, you know, help make, so that no needs forgotten. It positions us to be grant-ready and responsive to state and federal, or even private investment opportunities that might come available. The projects also provide a foundation for future CIP updates. So we know how to include them as the CIP moves forward. And then also, we're gonna factor them into upcoming rate studies, so that's another advantage. So when they do the rate studies, they base the rate studies on your current CIP. Well, knowing in year six that we have another big hit, we need to prepare for that. So, um, that ensures our long-term sustainability of our infrastructure systems, which is, which is one of your priorities. And so, um, this list reflects, you know, ongoing commitment to infrastructure resilience, public safety, and the quality of life, even beyond what we can fund today. So I wanna take a look at, look at some of, at the lists. The list is, the list is enormous, right? So we, we did put them in what we, where we thought that the funding could be available, so they're assigned to a fund. You won't see a year assigned to them. Uh, some of them are not critical needs and other ones are. So, um, you know, you, we can, we can look at this list, but an adaptive playground at Ariels Park, four hundred thousand dollars. A national orange bo- boat ramp for a half a million dollars. Um, the Cypress Forest Rec Center, um, gym floor renovation, that's a, that's a placeholder, right? We'd like to move that forward sooner. I mean, it needs it for, you know, about two hundred thousand. Cableing replacements, a city hall west parking lot renovation. I mean, that may not happen, depends on if, right now, the parking lot, um, uh, you know, the parking lots, it needs work. So, and that parking lot's closed right now. I don't have an intention of opening it back until we have a timeline for the downtown redevelopment. We don't actually need, it's not a requirement for us to have that. We see the, the city hall EOC building, that, that's just, again, that's a guess. We don't have a design, we have no way to actually estimate it until we spend that money. The three hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we wanna spend will help us analyze how much space we need and get a basic design. A Safe Roots to School for St. Petersburg Drive. A Shore Drive Trail that came out of the, the meeting discussions with, about the speed bumps on Shore Drive, that there, they, there's a, a desire for a trail along Shore Drive. Stevens Avenue Trail, there's no current sidewalk connection between Douglas Road along Stevens Avenue for, for people who work there. So, the resilient ready projects, so those are just the first phases of those. Um, resilient ready for Ariels Park was about six point four million. Again, that's two years ago estimate, three years at this point, maybe. And, um, and for the streets, about four million dollars for that. And, and that really was to add in bio swales, um, down the boulevards, and to elevate Ariels Park and, you know, parts of Shore Drive. So then we can look at, you know, um, ERP system replacement, uh, electrical resiliency. Douglas Road is an unfunded. East Oldsmar Sewer Collection System, you'll see five million dollars there. Um, the state has been, um, uh, talking about, um, uh, taking off that. That is eliminating septic tanks and putting its septic to sewer. At, at some point, that may be a requirement. Right now, it's not.
I think they've been talking about it for like, eight years.
They've been talking about it probably for a decade more than that, as long as I can actually remember, they've been talking about that. There's, you know, we have, we have an ide- and, and that part of Oldsmar, it's small. When you start thinking about what that would cost for some of interior rural communities in Florida where they're, they're all septic.
They're all septic.
So you're talking about in- installing new systems. So it's a very expensive initiative that could be preempted. You'll see all of, you know, um, things on here that are already discussed, like the, an additional reclaimed water storage tank, two million. You know, those are, those become more needs for us, right? Uh, the stormwater master plan projects, we just put a placeholder, we have, we have, we don't know what it's gonna cost. But we felt like we should put a placeholder in here so that we can start thinking about it. And so our placeholders come to about seventy-three million dollars. And so, you know, that's, that's an enormous amount of money. But I, again, I, you won't see that in other budgets. We're, uh, have you all ever seen that in another budget anywhere? Because most communities don't talk about it. I feel it's important to talk about it. City Manager presents the budget to you all, I wanna make sure that we have at least placeholders captured.
Placeholders, and then it's, like you said, if grant funding opens up, or if there's a billion dollars coming to the county, we have projects ready to list in the LMS, no problem.
Exactly, and that's why we were one of the first communities to have all of our projects in the LMS.
Most cities had nothing on the list because they don't maintain anything like this. So they would have to come up with it from scratch on a very short deadline.
Exactly, I'm proud of our efforts for this. And so, and so, thinking of grants, so I wanted to take some time to talk about that. As we plan for capital investments with limited financial capacity, it's critical that we pursue outside funding opportunities. We've been, I say aggressively, we have been aggressively, you've heard all the grants that we've gotten. You've got another grant award on your upcoming council agenda that will be published for next Tuesday.
Monday.
Oh, oh, sorry, Monday. And so I wanted to take a, a moment to highlight some of our efforts already. Um, it's a series of state and federal grant applications to help offset our local costs and to accelerate high priority projects. Our requests include, you know, infrastructure upgrades such as, you know, the Cypress Forest Industrial Park stormwater improvements, enhanced, um, you know, W, uh, a WRF expansion and reliability project. Oldsmar South Infrastructure Improvement Project, the water reclamation, um, I'm sorry, enhanced water treatment. You know, these aren't, aren't new, we've applied for these already. We've already applied for Lafayette sewer lining, we were awarded. We applied again for the same project, hopefully we'll get it. Um, we've, we've put in a state appropriation request for WRF improvements. Pinellas County, we've asked for five point five million dollars for, um, Douglas Road. So that's gonna help you all make a decision on if we get that money. You know, there's still a local investment, but, but we really need that five million dollars. So then also, you know, the hur- the hurricanes opened up some money, and that's what, um, you know, our mayor was talking about, is that, and, and, and the chief, he already said, we, we applied, you know, for that hazard loss, miti- hurricane loss mitigation program funding. We applied for that for all the fire station hardening projects. For the Hazard Mitigation Program Grant, you guys discussed this at length at council about how much was coming to, um, uh, to Pinellas County. Uh, we've applied for everything we could. So you'll see that list. Uh, the LMS committee is in the process of ranking all of those. We think we're in good posture based on the amounts of, uh, um, uh, projects that were submitted, the costs, and what our projects are, we, we, we hope to get some money. We won't know until, I gotta, I, I wanna say that, I wanna really just applaud our staff. Um, this, this, this comes from, um, when we were talking earlier with, um, when Chip was up here. This is a collaborative effort. I mean, when these grants start flying, I, I cannot tell you the enormous amount of work it takes for us to even put in the application. Then when we get the project, you heard all of the federal requirements and grant agreements and, and meeting, um, wage rates. All of these things adds an enormous amount of staff time. So, you know, um, city staff steps up, we take these on. We, we will work endlessly over weekends and trying to get these grant applications in so that the city is postured properly. So I, I can't be more thankful for, for our team at putting together these applications. It is, um, um, it is an enormous effort and a very interesting process, because they're all different, too. So, um, so thank you all. And there's not a person in this room who hasn't really, who hasn't been part of putting in a grant application at some point, I remember. I, except for Tom O'Shea, he's pointing himself out.
He'd probably help if you asked.
Yeah, I, really, he would help us, I'm sure, if we asked. So, um, so I wanted to really pause for a second and, um, and talk about, you know, usually I just end and say, "Thanks," that's all, folks. But, but today, I really wanted to talk about that this capital improvement program represents the city's commitment to maintaining and enhancing infrastructure, and supporting strategic growth, and being responsible stewards of public funds. That's what it comes down to, right? Our budgets are limited, just like your household budget. It's no, it's no different for a government. You know, it's not, this isn't fake money, it's real money, right? The larger the number is, the harder it is sometimes to contextualize it. And, um, each project in this plan, it's tied to real outcomes, safer streets, modernized utilities, better parks, more resilient public spaces, right? These are investments that directly improve the quality of life for our residents and the efficiency of city operations. Um, looking ahead, we're gonna continue to update plans, pursue grant funding, engage the community to ensure our investments align with shared priorities. I, um, I, I, I wanna thank you all for the, the city council did such a, um, a wonderful job at articulating priorities. When we went through, and I know that we have two new council members here, um, but when you articulated the vision and mission and had cascading goals and priorities, we base our plans on that. That's not just up here, that's something we need to, to, to put together a capital program that works for our community. So, um, I, so I really wanna thank you all at providing that clear vision. Um, our community's lucky, not all councils do that for their community, and I'm, I'm very grateful. And I know, I speak on behalf of all of your residents, too, if they, um, that, it's very important. And every, all of our staff, right? Uh, everyone's not, they're not gonna say no when I'm looking at them right now. So, um, I also wanna express, you know, of course, my sincere appreciation to our city staff. From initial concept to, to cost estimating, as you saw, is a lot more difficult than one could ever imagine. Plan reflects countless hours of work across multiple departments. The professionalism, attention to detail, and commitment to serving the residents really make all of this possible. And together with council's leadership and community input and staff's dedication, we're building a stronger, safer, and more resilient Oldsmar, not just for today, but for generations to come. So we, we thank you for, for taking, you know, two and a half hours, and I thank all of you all for, who, who knows how many hours, uh, getting ready to present this. So if you all have any final questions, we can, we can answer those.
Does anybody have any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
Thank you very much.
Well, I had a speech, but you just gave it, essentially. You know, one thing that's really clear is that whether through their combined efforts and yours, City Manager Donnelly, you have created a staff and a group of department heads that clearly care about each other. It's very evident, because you can't get to a document like this where nobody's willing to give, and nobody's willing to compromise, and nobody's willing to communicate. So, a bunch of clear goals are great, but it doesn't mean anything if you guys can't work together. I mean, it, it would work, but it would just be probably a lot more on the city manager to red line, red line, red line. But the way that you guys seamless- But the way that you guys seamlessly get up and hand things off to each other, it's not just a, an act. It's pretty clear that you all know everybody's department's budget and what we're prioritizing. And everybody's on board with it, which is probably incredibly unique. So while we may have a big list of unfunded projects, that's just what we do, we're unique. We do things differently, right? And I, I think that, you know, there's nothing to be ashamed of in having unfunded projects. We have, we have big dreams, we have big goals. We like to be first, we like to have a lot of ambition. Because, you know, in the past, sometimes it's led to some incredible results. So I commend all of you for, for the effort that went into this. I know that this was being done at the same time that, for example, the Planning and Redevelopment Department is literally underwater. And so the fact that this was put together at the same time as that's going on while we're also preparing for the hurricane season, planning, I don't know, 6,000 different events, Chip, over the last four months, like, it, it's not lost on us up here that you guys are doing this in addition to everything else. And of course, it's a, it's a visually impactful document as well, but when you're up here watching you guys present it, it's, it's really meaningful. It shows how much you care about your jobs, but more than that, it shows about how much you care about the city, whether you live here or not, it's, it's very clear. So thank you all for the heart and love that you put into this for our residents, appreciate you. And if there's no other comments or questions, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right.
Yeah, I just said, do we, do we need one? Like, I need just adjourned, because it's a little session.
Well, vice mayor says I can just bang the gavel, so. Our meeting is adjourned, thank you all very much for staying here this evening.
Trying to work as a team.
You were like, just end it, end it.